Okay, this is the zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, April 27, 2021. This is going to be a remote meeting, a WebEx video conference. Basically, I'll give you a quick overview. We listened to the application through the order that we see. We hear applications during the new business portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your hardship, state your application, provide at least some information with regards to your application. Once that's done, we'll have a question and answer period. And once that's done, we'll ask for staff comments. We'll ask for any comments from the public. And barring any of that information, we'll probably close the application once we hear all the comments that have to be heard. And we'll move on to the next application. When we finish all the applications, we'll go into all business and we'll vote on the applications that we heard during the new business portion of the meeting. The thing to remember is that if you have any information to disseminate, it should be disseminated during the new business portion of the meeting. We can't accept any new information during the second half of the meeting. The second half of the meeting is just relegated to voting on the applications at hand. Any questions on that? Everybody is aware of that or familiar with that. We have five members tonight, myself, Maureen is the host, Corey Whiteside, Lenny Tubbs, Nelson Branca, and Ryan Zelik. So we've got five members. Any application for a variance requires four votes in favor of the application to pass. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and read the first application if everybody is okay with that. Any other comments?
I'm just going to add, this Maureen speaking, that I did mute a couple people because there was a considerable amount of background noise. If, when you're not talking, you can mute your microphone, but you also have to unmute yourself. I don't think I can unmute anyone. So if you have trouble, please, I don't know, raise your hand or something if you're having, if you want to speak and you're having trouble unmuting. Thank you.
Okay, our first application is ZBA 2021-030 Berlin Turnpike, map 10-2, block 83, lots 12-7333, 127334, 13A, 13C, 7509, 13C, 7510, AKA 404 Berlin Turnpike. BT 2008 LLC, Peter Daddio, managing member of Daddio Family Limited Liability Company, member of BT 2008 LLC, is requesting a motor vehicle use location approval for a gasoline filling station for Berlin's under regulation 11R. Properties are owned by BT 2008 LLC and the gasoline filling station is being proposed as a component of a proposed mixed-use development. And this is continued from the January 26, 2021, February, February 23, 2021, and March 23, 2021 meeting. Speaking for the application.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury, the firm of Alter and Pearson. I represent Mr. Diaddio, who is also with us this evening with respect to this application. As the call for the public hearing indicates, this is our request for approval of a location for a gasoline filling station. It is not what you typically hear in terms of variance applications where you seek to find hardship in order to consider an application for a variance. In this particular circumstance, the zoning board of appeals is actually acting as an arm of the state in accordance with Connecticut general statutes 14-321. Your consideration here is to determine whether or not the property on the Berlin Turnpike that is a part of a much larger mixed-use development is appropriate as a location for a gasoline filling station. The, as the call indicated, we've had this matter continued several times, really with Adams, at Adams' request and suggestion, which we readily agreed to. We've been processing the greater application of the entire mixed-use development through the Planning and Zoning Commission, to the point where we believe that that commission is ready to act. At its last meeting, it approved the zone change to the overlay zone, which is necessary for the mixed-use development, and deferred action on the special permanent site plan approval, while staff had the opportunity to consider appropriate motions, conditions of approval, and any outstanding issues. We have already secured an inland wetlands and water courses permit, and also a flood zone permit. As this board is aware, we border the river to our south, and so that we had to get a flood zone permit as well as an inland wetlands and water courses permit. All of those permits are in place. At this point, we believe it's appropriate for the zoning board of appeals to consider this application now that we know that the Planning and Zoning Commission has accepted our zone change and is considering acting on our overall mixed-use development plan. I thought that Adams' memo and staff comments dated April 23, 2021 captures most of the important matters that would come before the zoning board of appeals with respect to this location. Importantly, we are in compliance with all of the zoning regulations that would apply with respect to the new zone that has been overlaid on the existing zone. Maureen, is it possible for you to put up one of the site plans that we submitted?
Maureen, I think.
I'm scrolling to the page and, or to that section, and then you can tell me which page you leave there maybe on once I get there, or if you talk, I can scroll back and forth. And then I provide a lot of feedback on this computer, so I'm going to unmute.
If you could put up SPD-0A, that will work fine. Or LR-1, whichever you come to first will work.
00A is the first one.
And that, that'll be fine. Thank you. All we see is, we see, we're not seeing the map.
We're not seeing.
No, I'm not.
Landing page.
Oh, no. It told me that was the page I was seeing. Hold on, we'll try again.
Thank you.
I'm still not in the right page. Okay, let me see if I moved this page, if it'll share it.
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. That's exactly what I needed. Thank you very much.
No problem.
So the, there is one issue that, there is one issue that is, I don't know if that, is that my feedback or someone else's? Sorry. The issue that has been trailing behind this entire application is the question of a particular aspect of the regulation whereby it's not clear whether or not every parcel in the zone has to be 10 acres in size, or that it can be two acres in size, which is the zone size for lots in the underlying zone. We've asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to make that determination. And if you had the opportunity to read Adams' memo, he requested that we show to the zoning board of appeals that we can comply with your zoning regulations for the underlying zone, whether or not the site is required to be 10 acres, which would be the larger piece that has the hook at the bottom along the riverbank, excluding that little square, which is a separate parcel up in the left center of the page. Or if it were a two-acre parcel, which is outlined in red on the plan that you see, in both instances, in both instances, we comply with all of the zoning requirements, setbacks, open space, and the like. And so Adam had wanted us to demonstrate that in either instance, no matter what planning and zoning does, we meet the regulation. In addition to that, it's important to understand that even though we're showing a two-acre piece, the developable portion is where the gas station and canopy pumps are. We are confined further by our wetlands permit and by our flood zone permit, so that the developable area will not go beyond that which is shown on this plan. And even though we may have to show a two-acre parcel, a substantial portion of the parcel, part of it to the south and part of it to the west, will not be developed. If it's a 10-acre parcel, pretty much everything to the left of the red line that you see at the back of the convenience store building is going to be committed to open space with walking trails and the like. We've made that representation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It will remain in its natural and scenic condition, either because it has a private conservation easement imposed on it, or because if the P&amp;Z decides that we can have two-acre parcels, we would deed the green, the open space to either the land trust or the town of Berlin as directed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But in Adams' memo, he makes a point of pointing, of making the board aware of this issue between 10 acres and two acres. And I wanted to take a little time to explain that the development envelope that you see for the gas station, convenience store, is what it is. That's really the location that you're approving. While we may have a two-acre parcel because we have to conform to zoning, the development envelope, the location, is what this board is responsible by statute for considering. We have submitted, we submitted back when we filed our application and then updated it as of April 21, a memo outlining our compliance with all of the standards that are set out in the Berlin zoning regulations under Section R of Section 11 of your regulations entitled gasoline filling stations. We have set out all of the standards we believe that we meet. And as I'm sure you noted, in Adams' memo, he takes no, he makes no disagreement with any of our conclusions. As he said, staff take, take no exception to the applicant's responses under zoning regulation 11R. We thought it was easier to provide a memo outlining each element of compliance so that the board would have the opportunity to see that in advance. I'm not going to read every one of those to you. It was submitted so that you would have the opportunity to do that. Suffice it to say that all of the items, 1 through 12 of the regulation, are satisfied by the plan that you have before you, and all of the zoning requirements are also satisfied by the plan. And again, I do want to emphasize that it doesn't matter in terms of your deliberations whether the Planning and Zoning Commission decides it should be two-acre parcels or 10-acre parcels. We still satisfy frontage, setbacks, side yards, rear yard, coverage. All of the zoning requirements are met by the plan and the location that you're presenting. I do want to confirm that Mr. Diaddio is very much aware of the 2,000-square-foot limitation on display of retail and convenience merchandise, and the plan that he submits for building permit, assuming that we can manage to get all the approvals that we need, will demonstrate that he's in compliance with that particular regulation. In Adams' memo, he suggests four possible conditions of approval. If the board saw fit to approve this application, I've reviewed those proposed conditions with Mr. Diaddio. We have no objection to those four or five conditions that he lists as bullet points. I believe there are five. And that we are certainly, will not object to those being made if the board saw fit to act as conditions of approval. The, all of the other matters that have been very, very thoroughly discussed with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and before that, the Wetlands Commission and the Flood Agency, have been incorporated into the plans that you have before you tonight. There was certainly some wisdom in the deferral of this application by the zoning board of appeals until we were better aware of whatever changes might occur. I will say to you that since we filed this application, really last year, and then deferred action, the location of the convenience store and Dunkin' Donuts, and the filling station and the canopy has not changed. It is as we presented to you at the beginning. There have been a great deal of refinements in other aspects of the plan, commitment to provide public access through parking at the south end of this parking lot to the open space to the rear, for example. Items like that. The location of the dumpster has been refined to a better location. We've created pedestrian safe passage through the parking lot and also to the convenience store from the proposed apartments that are to the north of this portion of the site, so that people can walk from the, there, where they live to the convenience store if they find that necessary, and also can make use of the filling station without going out onto the Berlin Turnpike. All of these mixed uses are connected by access ways that residents and others can use without having to exit onto the Berlin Turnpike. There will be two entrances and exits on, for the gas station, filling station, and then a main exit and entrance up at the northern portion of the site, up near the apartment buildings and the proposed retail. And that will be a signalized intersection so that people exiting the site will be able to go north or south, leaving the site from the northern driveway. From the south driveway, entering and exiting is right turn-in, right turn-out only. There would be no break in the median opposite the gas station. If somebody made use of the filling station and wanted to go north, they would make their way to the main drive at the northerly part of the property and make use of the signalized intersection to exit. We provided a very thorough traffic report to the Planning and Zoning Commission from our traffic engineer, Scott Hesketh of FA Hesketh and Associates. And it was his opinion that the driveways proposed for the site can be utilized with safety, and that the internal circulation within the property also will be safe in operation. So we confirm again that we comply with all the requirements of Section R, 11R of your regulations, and that we comply with all of the relevant zoning regulations as well. And we would ask that the zoning board of appeals approve this location as presented. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Diaddio is on the line with us as well, if there are operational matters that he would be able to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney D Alter. Just, does anybody have any questions regarding this application? This is a location approval application, and as such requires a majority vote. It's not a four votes in favor or five votes in favor. It's a majority vote. Maureen, would you correct me if I'm?
I believe that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyway, that, with that said, does anybody have any questions regarding this application?
Yes, Corey Whiteside, Counselor, thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you preemptively agreeing to the conditions in the memo. But you did make an opening statement about Adams' memo saying that that most of the things that you agreed with. Was there anything significant in there that you, that you do not agree with or that you take issue with that you want us to know about?
No, I think that the one part of this application, and Maureen can certainly correct me if I, if, or disagree with me, has been our wrestling with this two-acre, 10-acre business. Dr. Poland, who is the Planning and Zoning Commission's consultant, is very skilled planner in the private sector in the town, asked him to consult on this project because it's so significant. He indicated that it appeared to be a drafting problem that probably no one noticed because this is really the first application that they've had to consider this. And so in Adams' memo, I think it was hard, at least for me, to help focus on the, the really, I'm not going to say it's irrelevant to this application, but in many ways it is. For you, as the zoning board of appeals, considering the location of this site, it doesn't matter to you whether the site is two acres, 10 acres, or 100 acres. What you need to focus on is whether the location works. And what I wanted to do to help clarify the issue is to point out to you that because of flood zone restrictions and wetland restrictions, and the commitment that Mr. Diaddio has made to open space to the west, what you see as the development envelope is really what you're approving. We're not asking to go any further than the location that you see. And that, I'm not sure that that came through in Adams' memo. Other than that, I think that staff has done a very good job of pointing out the issues that should be addressed, and we've addressed them.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, this Maureen speaking. So, most of you may realize this or remember this, but specifically with a DMV application, with their application, when they come to the zoning office to get the sign off that the ZBA has approved location, we attach a plan to that and a development plan. So by them delineating that area in red here, and with the extent of the development as shown, I pulled that, particularly, you should be looking at the plan that focuses on this portion of the mixed-use development. That specific, the improvement specifically shown here, and the parking, the size of the building, et cetera, gets attached to that location, that DMV license application that we hand off to the state. So I guess that's to clarify the limit of the area. But we did want to discuss, and the reason Adam was pointing it out, was to have the commission's decision reflect that you're approving, location approval of the development site as you see it, not automotive gas station use for an entire 10-acre parcel, or, and all that land, which would obviously also need a site plan approval to be developed regardless. But, you know, it does get filed in the land records in perpetuity. So we want to make sure that.
And we agree.
And that's why they showed us this. But that's kind of the clarity that I'm trying to provide. The plan you see will get attached to the license.
Any other, any other comments, questions? The only concern I have is, it's not a concern, really. I'm just probably talking off to the side here, but is there any consideration given to, you know, charging facilities for electric vehicles in the future? Gas station is going to be built within the next couple of years, I'm assuming?
Correct. Um, that, I've had that question come up a couple of times in this context. And what was pointed out to me was that the charging of electric vehicles is a much longer-term process than filling up a gas tank. That it can take, in fact, I was talking to a friend of mine who just bought an electric car, and I said, how long does it take to charge? It takes five hours.
At least a couple of hours, anyway.
Yeah, so that in a situation like this, there wouldn't be a charging station. I will tell you that the plan now with all residential complexes like the one that we plan here will provide opportunities for some charging stations there because people will be parked for a longer period of time. So I guess the answer right now is no, because the technology is such that we wouldn't expect somebody to come and park their car here for five hours, two hours, whatever, to charge it up.
Depends. If there's a restaurant there, it might have it like West Farms, Rocky Hill, not Rocky Hill, Red Robin.
Right.
Behind Red Robin and West Farms, there's a half a dozen Tesla charging stations, I believe. And I happen to see those, and that's why I asked the question.
This, we have a convenience store that's limited to 2,000 square feet, so.
Right, right.
At this point, I don't think so.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have nothing.
Nelson, anything?
No, Tony, no. I got all the info I need.
Okay, so I guess if there's no other questions, make a motion to close the hearing on this application.
Can I just interrupt for one second? Can you, it's a public hearing, so make sure no members of the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I do that all the time when I do these video calls, because I don't see any other users in here. But I should ask for staff comments. I know you had a few comments already, Maureen. I don't know if you have any additional comments.
Um, so.
If not.
We shared the comments we have. I think Adams' report with those bullet points is very descriptive and point out that the, regardless of, you know, the location approval will stand for the lot. So you can make the decision regardless. So you can make the decision regardless of the fact that TNZ has not rendered their decision yet. Staff has no no worries, you know, or no cautions to you making a decision while the overall development plan is still under consideration by the planning and zoning commission. At this, at this point, as Attorney Alter expressed, we think you can make a decision. So do so choose.
Okay, and my apologies. Like I said, I don't know if there are any other people on the line here. At least I don't see anybody on the video screens. But looking for comments in favor of the application and comments in opposition to the application. Does anybody have any comments either for nor for or against? Going once, going twice? If not, now I think we can make a motion to close the hearing on the application. I know Ryan and Mr. Tubbs, do you guys have any comments at all?
The only comment I have, Tony, goes along with what you were asking about the elect, the recharging of the electric cars. And that technology is growing so fast that right now they have electric chargers that will give you quite a thorough charge in in a matter of minutes. Now, I'm not talking two minutes or three minutes like filling up a car of gas, but thirty to forty minutes can put a significant charge on a battery to get that car on the road again.
Well, that technology would be who've, anybody that's got a filling station, it might be a helpful add-on for a filling station. And it might be a situation where you might plan ahead for it so you have enough power to support it. But regardless of that, anyway, I think that that is something that could be a consideration in the future. But from the from the respect of the location approval, I I don't know if it's a if it's a finisher that's going to either add or subtract to it, it might help it. But other than that, if there are any other comments, entertain them to close the hearing on the application.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion to close this portion of the hearing.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Not all in favor.
Tony, Tony.
Yeah, I'm gonna go through the.
Tony, Kristen's trying to talk. Kristen has a question.
Yeah, can you just make sure that when people make a motion, you just say who it is so it's very clear for me?
Okay, we made a motion. A motion was made by Leonard Tubbs. Seconded by Nelson Graca. And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go through the, Maureen, can you go through the roll call?
Either one of us, I'll do it if that's all right.
Sure.
Sharon Franklin, yeah?
Hi.
Lenny Tubbs.
Hi.
Nelson Graca.
Hi.
Ryan Zelik.
Hi.
Corey Whiteside.
Hi.
That's everyone.
Okay. We can move on to our next agenda item. ZBA twenty twenty-one dash oh seven, thirty-eight Eastbrook Terrace, map fifteen dash two, block ninety-one, lot seventy C. Kyle and Tracy Cooney, property owners, are requesting a variance for southerly front yard of ten feet when thirty feet is required in an open space subdivision in the R twenty-one zone for Berlin zoning regulations five A eight F for detached ten foot by twelve foot accessory shed. Speaking for the application.
I am Mr. Chairman, Richard Pentor, on behalf of the Coonies. I have Tracy Cooney here with me tonight also. Basically, our application is to locate a a shed closer to the ten feet from the street line of Eastbrook Terrace, where generally it's a, there's a thirty foot setback. My client's property is, as you can see, is a curved lot. And we have about two hundred feet of frontage on Eastbrook Terrace. The house itself actually faces westerly. I think sometimes we need to give a little, basically, my argument is centering on the fact that we have a curved lot. And that curved lot sets it apart from other lots that are in the in the area or in this subdivision. It's the only curve lot in the subdivision. And reading from our zoning regulations, the ZBA, in order to grant a variance, the ZBA has to find that, and I'm reading from section B five, there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the lot or structure for which the variance is sought, which are peculiar to such lot or structure and do not apply generally to lots or structures in the neighborhood and which have not resulted from any willful act of the applicant applicant. So basically, my argument is we have a lot that is different from other lots in the subdivision. Ryan, can you hear me? Can you hear me, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Watch the, I got the map from, oh, the map.
I can, I can hear you.
All right. Thank you for putting the map up, Maureen. So essentially, when you have a curved lot like this, it opens up your entire yard to the street. We are proposing to put the, put the shed in a corner ten feet from, well, it'll be fifteen feet from the rear setback, which has already been reestablished, but ten feet from the property line. And there are some very tall arborvitae that actually block the street view. And the shed would be located behind the arborvitae. As a practical matter, this is going on the southerly side of of the property. The southerly side in a normal situation would be the side yard, although granted, this would probably be considered a a corner lot anyway. But I think if we literally interpret the thirty foot setback from the street, we're putting, it would be forced, it would force us to put the shed in, right in the middle of basically what is prime backyard area for them to utilize. And I don't think that putting it where we propose is really causing any detriment to the neighborhood. And later on, I'm going to read some letters and unfortunately didn't get into the package on time. But I do have letters from the neighbors that I'll read at the end indicating that they are in favor of this locating this shed where it's where we where we want to put it. Basically, the hardship again is, as I said, is the fact that it's a curved lot. And the curve lot unfortunately opens up everything. And the curve lot is, is a, is a difference that other lots in the neighborhood do not have. And that's basically something that our zoning regulation and state statute talks about. So that our our zoning regulation goes on that says to say that the aforesaid circumstances or conditions are such that the particular application of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the lot or structure and that the granting of the variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the lot or structure. Unfortunately, if we, if we didn't get the variance and the shed was going to be put, you know, thirty feet from the street, it would essentially block most of the usable backyard space that these people have. Granted, there is a pool that was erected in the back and that takes up a lot of the backyard as it is. But if we put the shed in the, they have some backyard space that they are using. And as you can see, there's a four foot RI fence, that's wrought, well, wrought iron fence around the pool area. Shed would basically go in the middle of the backyard if we insisted on a strict interpretation of the zoning regulation. The other criteria that are considered in a variance is that it's not detrimental to the plant's, the town's plan of conservation and development. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that I don't think the location of a shed is going to be any detriment to the town's plan of conservation and development. And the other criteria is that it shall not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. I don't see that it would be injurious to the neighborhood. In fact, most of the neighbors, well, all the neighbors that have responded have been in favor of it. And certainly, it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, and and welfare. Obviously, we're not talking about a very big structure. We're talking about a shed that is ten by twelve. I think a lot of people with these sheds just put them up and don't come before you, unfortunately. There's probably many sheds in town that are, you know, not in conformity with regulations. But the Coonies came before you to put the, put their pool in. And again, they felt it was only right to come before you when they wanted to install the shed. You know, the ordinary, the Coonies lot is in an R twenty-one zone. Ordinarily, there would be a ten foot for a detached accessory building. There would be a ten, ten foot side yard setback again. But this may not apply to this one because this probably would be considered a corner lot. Corner lots basically have to have frontage setbacks on two sides. But in the normal course of a of an R twenty-one subdivision, it is a, it is a ten foot setback ordinarily. The other thing about this location, if you're concerned, and I think from a neighborhood standpoint, they, the letters indicate that they want it to be hidden somewhat so that it's not open in plain view. You can attach conditions to your approval that they maintain the arborvitae or they maintain a natural buffer, which is there now. So this, this shed would not be visible from Eastbrook Terrace. It would be visible around the curve a little bit, but not as visible if it was in the middle of the backyard. And I'm going to read some of the letters that we got from, well, we got four letters from neighbors. They're not too long. I didn't get them in in time, so I'm going to read them into the the record. The first letter is from Leah O'Leary at seventy-two Eastbrook Terrace. And she states that I am writing to you on behalf of my neighbors Kyle and Tracy Cooney on Eastbrook Terrace. It's my understanding that you are, well, it's my understanding that you are not in favor of where they'd like to place their shed. However, as a neighbor of theirs for sixteen years, I do not agree with your thoughts and ideas of where you think they should place their shed. The idea has been well thought out and will be beneficial at the location for them as well as for us as neighbors. Please consider their placement and make this decision for the benefit of us on Eastbrook Terrace. Thank you for your time and consideration. That's Leah O'Leary at seventy-two Eastbrook Terrace. I also have a a message from Cindy Good at thirty-one Eastbrook Terrace, who states to whom it may concern, please allow my neighbors, the Coonies at thirty-eight Eastbrook Terrace, to place a shed behind their evergreens out of view from the street. They were told by the town, I'm not sure they were told, they were told by the town to place it in the middle of their yard against a pool fence, which would put the shed in plain view of everyone on the street. Please allow a variance for the Coonies to keep the integrity of the neighborhood. That's Cindy and Mike Good at thirty-one Eastbrook Terrace. I also have a letter from Elizabeth and Paul Monjolo at fifty-one Eastbrook Terrace. And or fifty-two, fifty-two Eastbrook Terrace. Now, the Monjolos live directly to the to the north, they're in the lot to the north of the of the Coonies property. To whom it may concern, recently, we learned our neighbors Tracy and Kyle Cooney residing at thirty-eight Eastbrook Terrace would like to add a shed to their yard for the purposes of housing their outdoor lawn care and garden equipment. Tracy and Kyle's yard abuts ours. Their beautiful home sits on a well-maintained corner lot lined with stately arborvitae. The Coonies would like to tuck their shed conveniently in the corner of their side and backyard and with the arborvitae hiding it from street view. This is the perfect location for a shed as it would enhance the beauty of the yard and neighborhood. Placing a shed in any other location would not only decrease open space for their outdoor activities and entertaining, it would also block views across the yard detracting from the beauty of the pool area. The shed in the middle of the yard against the pool fence would be an eyesore. Not only will the shed placed in a corner of the yard be a lovely and functional addition, it will also maintain the value of the homes in the neighborhood and solve the storage problem for the Coonies. Thank you. That again, Elizabeth and Paul Monjolo, fifty-two Eastbrook Terrace. The last letter I'm going to read in is from Vincent and Maria Lantieri. They're at forty-one Eastbrook Terrace. To whom it may concern, it was brought to our attention that both Kyle and Tracy Cooney are planning on purchasing a shed, which they are proposed to place at the closest corner of their property limits near Eastbrook Terrace and the property behind them, which is on Lower Lane. We ask that this would be a violation of, we understand that this would be a violation of current Berlin zoning regulation. However, we ask that the application for a variance be granted in this instance. The location would be more suitable for them. We thank you for taking their request in consideration. Again, that's Vincent and Maria Lantieri of forty-one Eastbrook Terrace. I know sometimes there seems to be, you know, a balancing act going on. And I know the the proposition of a hardship sometimes is very difficult to comprehend. State statute again provides language that is very similar to the town zoning regulation. Basically, the state statutes, and I'm reading from section eight dash six, subsection A, subsection three, it says to determine and vary the application of zoning bylaws in harmony with their general purpose and intent and with due consideration for conserving public health, safety, convenience, and property values with respect to a parcel of land where owing to conditions especially affecting said parcel, but not affecting generally the district in which it is such situated, a little, a literal enforcement of the laws, bylaws, ordinances, or regulations would result in exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship so that substantial justice will be done and the public safety and welfare secured if the if the regulation is varied. You know, a lot of times I think we we see coming before the the commission applications for, you know, extensions onto houses, garages. I think what in this situation we're talking about is shed that's proposed ten, it's ten by twelve. It's certainly not a huge addition. We believe that the the curved lot, which is the only curve lot in the in the Eastbrook subdivision, is, does raise to the level of a hardship or exceptional difficulty in the Cooney situation. Practically speaking, in order to avoid using up, putting the shed in the middle of their backyard or what's left of their backyard, putting it in this corner. And I think with, you know, the condition that they maintain the arborvitae to block it from street view is really the the best possible location. And I don't think it it detracts obviously from the town plan of conservation and development. And I don't think it's, it certainly doesn't detract from the the public health, safety, or welfare in this situation. So our, basically, our our argument is that is based on the fact that, you know, we have a curved lot. And the curve lot, you know, in my opinion, should should have, should give the Coonies some relief from a little literal interpretation of a thirty foot, a thirty foot setback in this situation. Because it it limits what they have left, you know, in order to place, in order to place the shed. And where that's why we're asking the commission to allow us to put it in the corner with with sufficient, you know, sufficient blockage from the street using the arborvitae. Again, our our hardship or substantial hardship is based on the fact that we have a, we have a corner lot. And the corner lot unfortunately opens up most of their yard to the street. Ordinarily, an R twenty-one yard would have a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. We have, they have two hundred feet. Ordinarily, an R twenty-one yard would have a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. We have, they have two hundred feet of curved frontage, so basically their whole yard is, is opened up, and this would obviously allow them to use more of their backyard without, without really impinging on anything. If the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Penter, the well-presented application. And I, I actually visited the property today, earlier today, and I could not agree with you more. If I lived in that neighborhood, I would want a shed behind those arborvitae, and I, I think that that's the perfect location for it because of the fact that, that lot is a circular lot. So I, I, I think it would be an eyesore if it was placed in the location where it should go. And I, I can't agree with you more than, more than.
That's what we from, from some of the neighbors, Mr. Franklin too, that it would be an eye, it would be an eyesore, and not only that, it would usurp most of what they have left for their backyard also. And it because of.
I couldn't agree with you more at, at this point. Think from the perspective of, you know, when you look at applications, each application is looked at individually on its own merits. We don't try to set precedence, or we don't try to, you know, compare application one to application two and so on and so forth. We look at them on their own merits, and, and this particular application, I think, is the application is justified. I believe it is anyway. But again, you know, we have to have a, a vote on it, and we also have to have comments from our other board members, so I, I'm gonna ask for comments from our other board members if they have any questions related to the application. Any, I, I think you mentioned something about maybe conditionally requiring some arborvitae or trees to, to block off the shed, that type of thing. You know, that makes a lot of sense as well.
Well, that would be fine, Tony. If so, we'd maintain the buffer with the, with the arborvitae's blocking it from Eastbrook Terrace also.
Right, right. Nelson, Lenny.
I really have to think Attorney Penter's been coming to us too many times, and he put all our, all our questions out before, before we had a chance to answer them.
Ditto.
I, I agree with Lenny. I have no more questions.
Yeah, me too.
I'm good.
Where are you? You up? Good too? Ryan?
Good.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Attorney Penter, yeah.
No, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any comments in favor of the application as far as public listening in? Comments to the application? And finally, staff comments, Maureen?
Um, no, I don't think I have anything to, to add. As Lenny indicated, I think they, that applicant responded to the, the questions that were raised in the staff report.
Thank you, Maureen. Barring any other comments, I'll make an app, I'll make a mo, a motion to, to, to close the hearing in this application.
Second by Whiteside.
Okay, a motion, the motion was made by myself and by Corey Whiteside.
I'm gonna go.
Could you take a roll call?
Chairman Franklin, yeah?
Hi.
Leonard Tubbs?
Hi.
Nelson Graca?
Hi.
Ryan Zellig?
Hi.
Corey Whiteside?
Hi.
Okay. I, are there any other questions that we might have missed, or anything that else, anything else that needs to be covered? If not, we can go into old business? Not hearing anything. We'll go with the old business and go into the first application that we had heard, which is ZBA two thousand twenty-one dash oh-three zero Berlin Turnpike, AKA four oh-four Berlin Turnpike. BT two thousand eight LLC, Peter Daddio, managing member of Daddio Family Limited Liability Company, member of BT two thousand eight LLC, is requesting a motor vehicle use location approval for a gasoline filling station per Berlin zoning regulation eleven R. Properties are owned by BT two thousand eight LLC, and the gasoline filling station is being proposed as a component of a proposed mixed-use development. And this application was continued from January, February, and March meetings.
I make a motion, this is Lenny Tubbs, I make a motion that we approve this application with the conditions set forth by staff.
This is Nelson Grassa, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, Maureen, could you take a roll call, please?
Sure. Chairman Franklin, yeah?
Hi.
Leonard Tubbs?
Hi.
Nelson Graca?
Hi.
Ryan Zellig?
Hi.
Corey Whiteside?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next application.
Very much for your vote.
Oh, thank you. And good luck with it.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
ZBA two thousand twenty-one dash oh-seven thirty-eight Eastbrook Terrace, map fifteen-two block ninety-one, lot seventy C, Kyle and Tracy Cooney, property owners, are requesting a variance for a subtly front yard ten feet, one thirty feet is required in an open space subdivision in the R twenty-one zone for Berlin zoning regulations five A eight F for detached ten-foot by twelve-foot accessory shed. I'll make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second it, Lenny Tubbs.
Did you want to add the, hold on, did you want to add the arborvitae barrier has to remain?
Yes, I would like that.
Yeah, I think we should. I'll make the application, I'll revise the motion to make the app, I'll revise the motion to approve the application with the arborvitae barrier.
And that they maintain that arborvitae barrier.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I'll make that motion that the arborvitae barrier is maintained and, and included in the, in the approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, Maureen, can you please take a?
Chairman Franklin, yeah?
Hi.
Leonard Tubbs?
Hi.
Nelson Graca?
Hi.
Ryan Zellig?
Hi.
And Corey Whiteside?
Hi.
Okay, that's approved.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Coonies.
Thank you, Attorney Penter. It was a very good presentation.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
I think we have some minutes to approve?
Yes, we do.
Maureen, could you help with that? I'm pretty sure that we need certain people to approve the minutes of November fourth.
So for November fourth, for the remand portion of that, Chairman Franklin, Corey Whiteside, and Ryan Zellig were all present at that meeting and seated. So that should not be an issue. There's three of the four. There were attendants at the meeting. Fifteen was also in attendance at that meeting, but that's still a majority of the meeting. I have sent a message to see if we can get, to make sure that that's not a problem, but I don't think that's a problem. I understand simple, simple majority of those seated in the hearing.
But that said, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I went through them earlier. They looked okay to me. Did anybody catch any, any issues with it?
I just want to note that it is for the entire meeting as well, so if you want to handle them, if anyone has comments that were seated for the rest of that meeting. The members of the November twenty-fourth meeting, there's Tony, now, twenty twenty, yeah, Nelson Graca, Ryan Zellig, Lenny Tubbs, and Corey Whiteside that are top in the next meeting.
That was for the first, I was only here for the first portion of that meeting.
Right, so if you have comments on the, on the minutes for the first portion of that meeting, any of you can make comments on that if you were present. And then, but the vote should be specific as well to the second, to the remand. No comments? Sounds like no comments.
I have nothing.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the November meeting.
Second, Whiteside.
So I'll add.
Motion was made by, motion was made by myself and Kristen and seconded by Corey Whiteside. And Maureen, can you go through the roll call?
So for, I'll ask those that were seated for the entire meeting, Chairman Franklin, yeah?
Hi.
Corey Whiteside?
Hi.
And Ryan Zellig?
Hi.
And for the overall, Chairman Franklin, yeah, for the entire set of minutes?
Hi.
Lenny Tubbs?
Hi.
Nelson Graca?
Hi.
And Corey Whiteside?
Hi.
And Ryan Zellig?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess for outside, any other business we have?
The minutes of March twenty-third, I believe were also.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just have one, one note on the last paragraph of the first matter, the one that I was not involved in for the Haley's. It just says Commissioner Zellig, and I think it's missing the words moved to. It just says Commissioner Zellig approve application.
Can you say, what page are you on?
Ten or eleven.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, I got it. Okay. Action noted.
Sounds right.
Any other additions, corrections, deletions? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March twenty-third.
Second by Whiteside.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded by Corey Whiteside. Any discussion on favor?
Okay, Chairman Franklin, yeah?
Hi.
Lenny Tubbs?
Hi.
Corey Whiteside?
Hi.
Ryan Zellig?
Hi.
All right, that's everyone.
Thank you. Any other items to the agenda, I mean, for the meeting?
I, I have something that I would like to add for discussion.
Right.
Unless, I mean, obviously, the board first. But, so for the next meeting, we already have five applications. We're expecting two more at minimum. And, yeah, and it was suggested to me that, or to us, that perhaps the zoning board of appeals consider having an additional meeting in the month of May to handle some of the applications and materials in order to administer that. One of the ideas that we had was to separate them out to have those items that are location approvals. We have a couple of restaurants or liquor permits. I think there's also a gas use, a gasoline, a motor vehicle use rather. And then we have variances and, and a determination of a non-conforming use to be made so far that we know of. One of the other expected applications is a variance. So we're suggesting that the board consider adding a meeting perhaps on May eighteenth, which is a Tuesday. That gives us enough time to notice the meeting where you'll consider the location approval applications that as they relate to businesses and will facilitate some business uses in town. Having some responses in less than a month and a half from missing the deadline for this meeting.
Maureen, me personally, I don't have a problem with that, but I also have another question. At what point can we start doing these in-house so that it doesn't take this long, and when are we allowed back at Town Hall?
We think next month. So this was, we thought you'd be in person this month. The time that we had to start planning the meetings and posting them, there was a little flip of a surge in numbers in the state, and so we were asked to just chill and hold off a bit. Right now, everything, you know, a lot of the executive orders are expiring mid-May anyway. And so therefore, we're looking at, at least having hybrid meetings if they're not completely in person, but we believe the hybrid will stick.
I just think these meetings will go a lot quicker. That's the only reason why.
Yep.
They absolutely will.
Stairs, the town has been very generous with making that room safe and friendly to provide those screens in the town council chambers, and we have outfitted a couple of other rooms so that some of the smaller boards that need little rooms have.
Well, like I said, going back to your original.
Meet upstairs, so that's.
Going, going back to your original request, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I don't know about the rest of the guys, but I.
I am, I am not available on the eighteenth.
Think we have enough available? Would we like to think about another date? Would you, you know, I mean, I guess, Tony, that's, you know, your discussion to have.
The eighteenth is, is not a good time. Let's see, what the, how about the twentieth?
The twentieth is a P and Z meeting, and so they'll be upstairs.
I'm out of town that whole week from the seventeenth to the twenty-second.
Oh, okay. Well, the regular meeting is on the twenty-fifth, right?
There's only, you know, there's some requests for, you know, locations and liquor permits. They usually don't take very long.
I, I would.
Could we do a WebEx meeting for the location approvals on maybe May thirteenth? Or maybe on May thirty-first?
No, before that, you mean?
May thirteenth?
The before the, before the, I'm counting, I'm sorry, because I, we have to have enough time to post it, so I'm just.
Well, Lenny's off that whole week, week of the sixteenth. So I'm thinking like the thirteenth, that, that's not a good one, Maureen?
I should, the thirteenth is a Thursday. I should be able to get a. Let me just, I'm, I'm sorry, can you give me one second while I look at the calendar to see what other meetings there are to kind of determine if a room is available or if you choose WebEx, that's. Another story.
If it's a location approval, maybe we could just do it via WebEx and make it a lot easier for everybody.
I don't think that's enough time to resend letters, again, it would be only the applicants that haven't sent their letters yet as well. We don't want.
We can put on the twenty-sixth maybe, or do it back to back on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, do the twenty-fifth with the. Hybrid meeting and then the twenty-sixth with a WebEx for location approvals.
I think at that point, I might, by the time, and I, again, this is just recommendations. And this was to move through the process for some of the applicants that wanted, you know, that, that. Where there was concern of the length of time for business operations. But. I think at that point, it might be worth, as Lenny said, if you move through them quickly on the twenty-fifth, you might be able to do them all that night, you can add a special meeting. If you can't get through all the applications after a meeting date, it's, it's been, it's moving the meetings early. That, that creates the notice requirement that's a little more difficult, so I would kind of suggest do them all on the twenty-fifth if you can't. Find another date, but, and then add a special meeting if it goes too late. As a, afterwards, if you can't add one before. But before it's to facilitate the process more quickly. Due to the volume of applications. Oh, I, oh, I will also say that Sandy did provide that she also has no objection to having a meeting. I'm sorry, she gave me that information.
We, we could do that if you want to do it, you add it up to the back of the twenty-first.
Yeah, we just leave them all on the twenty-fifth if you can't find another meeting date and add a meeting afterwards if that meeting went too late. But I was asked to ask you if you'd, if you'd consider a meeting early. In the month. But again, the thirteenth does become problematic with notifying a budding owners. It's a, it's the terminal date for that.
Sounds good to me.
Whatever you guys decide.
Or we, you know, and, and I. Appreciate all commission members, really regularly seated members. Voicing their ability to attend and, and whatnot, so I don't want to step on that, but you know, there is that option of offering a clean use themselves.
You're talking like the twenty-fifth, I mean, it's, it's, it sounds good to me, twenty-fifth is good, just do it all on the twenty-fifth and, you know, make it easier for everybody. We'll spend an extra half an hour, an extra forty-five minutes and take care of it, what a special meeting on the twenty-fifth.
No, the twenty-fifth is a regular meeting, that is the meeting date.
Yeah, I know, but the meeting date is the twenty-fifth, if you have a special meeting, can you have one right after that?
You don't, you wouldn't need a special meeting unless it goes too late, and then yes, you could. Do one to continue the business because you'd be announcing it at that meeting, it wouldn't be prior to. That needs an additional notice or needs the notice being made in advance.
Is everybody okay with that?
We have time to make the notice for the.
I'm good with whatever you, you guys decide.
So am I, like I said from the beginning, be it two meetings or one or three, whatever, I'm in.
Let's just have one meeting.
Okay.
One's good.
Yeah, just push the location.
Maureen, though, if it goes over six applicants, you have to provide coffee for us at the, at the, at the town, okay?
We have a pot down there.
Can, can, can I ask that we try to get the packets out a little bit earlier if we can, so we have a chance to look them over?
Absolutely.
Well, we, we continue to do our best, you know, the volume alone is just boggling this office, so it's really. I, I know Adam worked relentlessly to, to try to get these out, I thought you got them Friday.
I got it pretty early.
I think I got my Thursday, actually.
I don't remember.
I got my Thursday.
Because I was surprised he. I, I thought he was going to leave some for me to deliver and, and they, they weren't here, he was gone and had delivered before I, I got my share, so. We, we do have, and we, we continue to strive to get them out with as much advanced notice as possible.
The last time I, the last time I got it kind of late, but.
Yeah, it, again.
Last time I got it, it was two days after the meeting.
That was because we nailed them a week in advance, we learned, we delivered them again this month, you know, no mail.
I literally received them on Thursday after the meeting.
Yeah, yes.
I, we noted that to several others. In the space, we realized, and, and you know, we thought going mailing over a week before the meeting. Should have been plenty of time, it used to be, I used.
The mail now can take up two to three weeks to get local mail, it's, it's awful.
It is, and it's sad.
I mailed letters to my attorney two months ago. And he got it, he got it a month and a half after the date and it was stamped out of New York.
Yeah, mail's been really kind of tough lately. Okay.
That's all, I mean, I just was, you know, approaching that.
All right, so we're going to shoot just for the, the original day, we'll do everything on that original day. That sounds good, okay, have the coffee ready and hopefully it'll be in-house.
Starbucks.
Yes, we do put it in, have it in-house.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn, yes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, take care.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.